Thank you for joining us this evening for the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Montessorino Regular City Council Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear council members speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken in private.
And with that, I will call the regular meeting of the Montessorino City Council to order on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, that's seven oh seven P M. Councilmember McEachran has agreed to lead us in the flag of allegiance.
Then, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart of all.
Can we go to a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember McEachran?
Present.
Councilmember Alahi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Here.
Mayor Will Shiner?
Present.
We didn't have any orders of day. Nothing. But then the first item on the agenda is announcements, which is a new kind of item which will be on the agenda going forward. And the, today, the announcement is about the twenty-fourth annual Martin Luther King Junior stop the violence event. And Councilmember Alahi will give us the details on that.
Thank you, Mayor. I try to take advantage of the announcement format by suggesting an announcement. This, this has to do with an event for, for youth, which is really during violence. And it is going to be, it's called the Martin Luther King, it's a celebration of Martin Luther King. It's an event that goes for, it promotes youth leadership, starts at two P M. on January the thirteenth. Goes on to eleven, there's a fashion show after that also. And various youth from different communities will be participating. So I would encourage you to go to the event if you can. And it's going to be held at the Neverdie College in San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is the time when anybody, your president or online, can address the council about a subject that is not on the agenda. So if you are, if you're present here in the chambers, please step forward and address the council. Please state your name, you have three minutes.
I won't take the three minutes. Council Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Democracy in Action, I love it. I'm representing a neighborhood group up on Withy Road, right above you here. And we've had some, some rather loud parties that have been going on in our neighborhood. There are, our Mr. Leonardis is well aware of the activities, we met with him a couple of times, the police are certainly aware. One thing that's come to our attention as a result of the investigation, as a group of concerned neighbors will do, is there's no city ordinance for noise. LaScatahas one, Saratoga has one, certainly larger cities like San Jose have one, but our city doesn't. And I would just like to request that, when appropriate, that you guys take a look at that. And perhaps it's time for Monte Sereno to have a noise ordinance, so we certainly could have used it.
Thank you, we'll definitely take that into consideration.
May I ask a question?
Sure, of course.
Are you familiar with LaScata's ordinance?
I, I won't say I'm an expert, but I've read it, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not a lawyer, nor am I, say, a Hollandian express, yeah.
Right, so, so Monte Sereno is adjacent to LaScata's
Correct.
in many, on many streets. One house will be LaScata's, the next house Monte Sereno.
Yeah.
If we were to, in the future, if we were to have an ordinance that was aligned with, very similar to LaScata's, would that be acceptable?
It would be, I think that, that would be my advice.
Right.
Yeah, I, I thought we had, we keep talking about those lawn mower noises and all. Obviously, it came up as if we did have a noise ordinance. Do we have a noise ordinance?
We, as far as I know, we do not have a noise ordinance at all, we kept discussing that. Yeah, I think you are correct. Interesting. We will, we will take it into consideration and follow up.
Excellent, thank you for bringing it.
Can I get your name for the record?
Yes, sure, Tom Sparkman, S.P.A.R.K.M.A.N. And I'm on Withy Road in Monte Sereno.
Thank you so much.
Great.
Anybody else present here in favor who would like to address the council on a subject that's not, that's not on the agenda?
We do have a hand raised.
I have both my own questions, is there anybody attending online who would like to address council? Please raise your hand.
We have Jay Pepp, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, if you can state your name for the record, three minutes is left.
Yeah, Joanne Pep.
Oh, you can go ahead.
Okay, so my, my request is similar to the last gentleman who spoke, but on a different subject. So I've been working on Highway Nine safety since two thousand and two, and we do have a bike lane and a pedestrian path, which is good, and I worked really hard on that. But, and I make a lot of calls when there are cars and block it, you know, people blocking the bike lane or the pedestrian path. And recently, I've been calling about cars, and I've called LaScata's Monte Sereno Police Sheriff's Office in Saratoga, and talked to Alan quite a bit in your office. And I've been working on trying to get the food truck that's across from the Keto Road Fire Station moved, because I've seen people going in and out of there, and there's a lot of parking. Anyway, Caltrans, I got them to put up some no parking signs, but in researching this a little more, Monte Sereno has no parking ordinance, and I've been talking to Officer Kalipo, and we, we've been working on this for years, and I don't think anybody really realized that Monte Sereno has no municipal code for parking. There's no definition, so it is not, the police cannot enforce no parking or any parking, you know, rules, and write tickets in Monte Sereno, whether it's on Winchester, whether it's on Highway Nine, whether it's on Ridgecrest. Those no parking signs all along Highway Nine in Monte Sereno, they can't write a ticket, they can't make people move, because we have no parking ordinance, there's no meat behind it, it can't be taken to court, they will lose. And so I don't know, you know, Saratoga has a parking ordinance, LaScata has a good parking ordinance, we don't have a parking ordinance. So the cops can't write tickets on any street in Monte Sereno, because it will not be upheld in court. And I don't know how this big gap happened, how, you know, it's ridiculous, but we need something done about it. And I request that you, you know, we get this in place as soon as possible, because there are cars parked, especially on Highway Nine, that need to be moved, that are blocking the bike lane, and, you know, it needs to be enforceable. So I'm asking that you prioritize this, and whether it's staff or the parking, you know, the Safe Better Streets Commission, somebody, we get an ordinance going and we get this there before, you know, people were killed, which is why we got that bike lane out there. And now we need to be able to enforce it and keep cars from parking in it, thank you.
Right, thank you very much for your comment, does anybody have any questions? That has come up recently, there recently, so we will, we will take a look at it and take it under consideration if any actions needed, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda, oh, sorry, are there any other answers online?
Yeah, there are.
Okay. Then we move on to, let's see, written communications, have we received any written?
Thank you.
Written communications, about anything on the agenda?
No.
Moving right along, the next item is the consent calendar, which has items two, for the council meetings on December fifth. Number three, approved of ordinance dated December nineteenth. Number four, accept the treasurer's report for the period ending August thirty-first. And number five is the noxious and dangerous weed and rubbish resolution. So those are the five items on the consent, does any, if the council member wanted to pull any of these items on the consent calendar? You do?
Oh, yes, I want to provide them the nature.
Number two. We will pull item number two. And, any other? No, in that case, is there a motion to move along with items three, four, and five?
So.
Yeah, public comment for remaining three, one, five.
Okay. All right, number two, Councilmember Turner.
Oh, I, I wish to go and stay, because I wasn't here then.
Okay, well, so we do, number two separately?
Two, two items, three, four, and five, and then come back to item two.
Okay. That's what I, so is there a motion to move it up to three, four, and five?
Right before that, we have to open it for public comment on the consent calendar, items three, four, and five.
There you go. Okay. Is any public, public comment on items number three, four, and five from the consent calendar?
No hands raised.
Nobody on, in council chambers, anybody online?
No hands raised.
Okay, in that case, we'll close the public comments. Bring it back to the council, there are a motion, so we'll go down to two, four, and five.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, there's a motion attached, number five.
We'll go to item number two. Open public comment on item number two?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, nobody here in council chamber? In that case, there are a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve item two, the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three regular city council meeting minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
I think we discussed before that if
I understand.
even if you don't attend the meeting, you can still vote in favor.
And I went ahead, just for the record, I did email Councilwoman Turner the link to the video of the meeting on December.
Okay. All right, next item is public hearings, we don't have any public hearings today. Moving on to unfinished business. Item number six on the agenda is housing element update, the flag update on the status of the housing element, I believe there is a staff report, yes?
Yes, thank you, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I am Diana Perkins, the city's planner. As the council is aware, we've been working on the updated housing element for close to two years now. Most recently, the city submitted a third version of the document to the department, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, on July twenty-fifth of this year for their review. We received comments on that supplemental from H C D on September twenty-second, and that comment letter is attached to the staff report. Since those comments were received, staff has been working with our consultants to address the comments that were provided. We have had a few meetings with the H C D staff assigned to coordinate our review to discuss these comments and provide some informal revisions to H C D that they have reviewed informally also. The items that are remaining are requests for more data to support the site's inventory, fine tuning of the programs to provide more specific timing and mid-cycle reviews for certain items, and providing additional details on how the proposed programs meet the requirements for affirmatively furthering their housing. At this point, staff is confident that policy changes will not be needed to achieve certification of the staff report, that the additional information and data that we're working to provide will, will address the comments from H C D. Most recently, staff did provide H C D with draft, informally, with draft changes of the housing element last week. We do anticipate receiving informal feedback from H C D around the second week of January. Assuming that schedule holds, we anticipate the revised housing element to be completed and published for the required seven-day public comment period, and we submitted formally to H C D by the end of January. This concludes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for your report. Councilmembers, any questions about this report? Any none? I have one, one question related to this topic, have we received any builder, building, builder remedy applications?
We have not, and we haven't received any in for desire.
Thank you.
Listen, I think Sunday, they got the housing element approved.
Last week, I think, yes.
All right, if there are no questions, then let's open this for public comment.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, sure. Then raise your hand.
Okay, so I, I wanted to say, you know, you have done really the job with the housing element, working on it this last two years. And I read the H C D letter in detail, and I think what, what I'm hearing here is that you believe that additional analysis will, will satisfy H C D. I sincerely hope that's right, however, I'm a little bit less than optimistic, just judging from what we've seen with other cities. I had not fully grasped the difficult conditions under which staff was working with, right, in the past. Now, trying to negotiate something reasonable, that is, to preserve the character of our city with an extremely authoritarian organization who appears to be pushing an agenda diametrically opposed to our own is kind of brutal. To be honest with you. So I have pulled three examples that I want to bring to you, and, and maybe you can make comments about it. There are others, but I'm not going to go through all of them, I'm just going to go through three. One, H C D has repeatedly stated that we must create many small lots in our city and populate them with high-density housing. The two S B ten lots that we provided on Winchester Boulevard does not seem to satisfy them, that's, that's my take on that. And, and, you know, you, you can give us your input on that. The second one is, it seems like we're shooting at a moving target, excuse the pun intended, right? Yeah, H C D continuously moves the goalposts. They have given us outrageous Mina numbers of one hundred ninety-three plus X plus buffer. We have mapped those numbers with A D U's, right? Now, H C D is saying they will only take a hundred and sixty of those units. The rest, the city has to satisfy with multifamily housing. And that's stats where I'm a little apprehensive, coming back with multifamily housing. H C D, number three, my third concern, is H C D have deemed us to be a racist city, claiming that we have too many white people and our residents make too much money, right? They have used the twenty-ten census to come to this conclusion. They want our goals, programs, metrics, and actions that you're going to give them to solve this problem. So the question is, how are we going to solve the problem of racial inequality, right? Other than saying you're not using the right census. So H C D has gone, have gone from demanding that we allow for things, to demanding outcomes that we cannot possibly control. And so I'm a little apprehensive, I'm very apprehensive about that. So here's what I'd like for us to continue to work towards. What are our options, right, in the event our housing element is not approved? Many cities have thought that their housing element would be approved, and, you know, the next, the next meeting with, with H C D, they said, no, you're not approved. And, and perhaps you can consider council and staff working in a brainstorming session, a closed session, so to speak, you know, at some point in time, it's secret. So those are my comments.
Comments or questions?
Say that again? My, my question was, what are our options in the event that our housing element is not approved?
So that was the question?
That was my question. And, and the ones before that were all comments.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Do you want to, do you want to respond first, or?
So the options are to keep trying. You do have an adopted housing element that was adopted last January, and we anticipate resolving the issues with H C D and adopting a amended housing element. But, other than that, there really aren't any options. So we'll continue to work, I think, I, I do think we are getting close, and our consultant, who's done a lot of housing elements this round, thinks that we're close. So I don't know that, I don't know that we disagree with you about moving the goalposts and all of those things, but I think we have kind of narrowed it down, and we anticipate having some resolution hopefully soon.
So are you meeting with them before January again, or is Jan, is January perhaps our deadline, right? So most of the cities will, will have to come up with housing element that's been approved by H C D by January.
And that was actually required, yeah, it was actually last January that it should have been completed. And then you had a hundred and twenty days after that to actually complete it. So the zoning now, because it wasn't done within that hundred and twenty days, we now do the zonings within one year. So that penalty, so to speak, has already been applied, and we'll continue working with them like others have done, I think in Southern California, there's still cities that don't have theirs approved. I know Diana would like to be done with this, because once this is done, then there's the implementation of it, so a whole new process will start. At all, at this point, all we can do is to continue to respond to H C D's comments, but we are optimistic, more optimistic, I think, than they've been in the past.
Thank you. Councilor, correct?
I'm, I'm good, I'm not going to drag you along. I'll just make a brief comment. I read a monthly update from one of the San Jose City Council members, and he stated that San Jose believes they're in compliance with their housing elements, so therefore, unless, their, San Jose's perspective is that, that even though H C D has not approved it, they're in compliance. And I believe that we passed ours and submitted ours, and we believe that we're in compliance, and we did that in good faith, and my question for Ms. Perkins is, are there, no, my, my question is simple. Do you believe that we're still in compliance with our housing application as submitted?
Yes, staff does.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any further questions from council? Without, then we move on to public comment. Anybody here in the chambers who would like to address that there? Anybody standing online, no hands raised? Then we'll bring it back to council for comment, if any. If anybody left a comment on this report? No? Then we move on to the next subject. The next subject is new, under new business. We're here to recognize several outgoing city commissioners. So let's start with the Site and Architecture Commission. I believe, yeah, one of the outgoing commissioners is actually here, and we would like to recognize you. Orion Balasubramanian, I've worked with you on the several committees for quite a few years. I would like to thank you very much for everything you've done in those committee, all the work you put in, I know you worked very hard. Well, you're site and architecture is not always an easy commission to be on, but you were always optimistic and positive, so thank you very much for what you've done. So we'd like to recognize you, you have a certificate that you can hang out, or file, or? Thank you very much for everything you've done.
Thank you, thank you, I enjoyed sitting on the commission, thank you.
Any council member?
Thank you very much, thank you.
Or any of the other, any of the other two people online?
No, they let me know, Mr. Stephen White, Commissioner, former Commissioner for Site and Architecture, Stephen White wasn't going to be able to attend, and for the Better Streets Commission, that he would try, I think they had some other arrangements, and possibly would try to attend at least online, but no, they're not ready yet.
Okay. Do we need public comment on this? Anybody wants to comment on this subject? In council chambers here or online?
No hands raised.
I thought so. All right, so we'll keep the other to, to maybe the next council meeting or?
Or we're just going to, and then we can mail them to them, they, they are aware that, that tonight, they were going to be recognized for their, for going out.
I'd like to make the comment, I think that it's very important for people to volunteer their time in the city of Monte Sereno to serve on site and architecture, Better Streets, and other commissions, and the youth commission, obviously. So I'd like to thank the outgoing commissioners and applaud them for their public service. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, any further comments? No? In that case, we will move on to item eight on the agenda, which is consideration and, and overall the twenty, twenty twenty-four city council meeting schedule, and there is a staff report on this.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman, for you this evening, is the annual calendar of all of the proposed city council meetings for two thousand and twenty-four. It's somewhat self-explanatory, I would like to mention that we have provided a color-coded, this is new, color-coded item that shows all of the other meetings for all of our boards and committees and commissions as well. So we have an idea, just by a kind of snapshot, seeing what else the city is doing, just in case a special meeting needs to be scheduled or, or whatnot. The, the main asks in this calendar coming up are, January second, we cancel that meeting, it's the day after New Year's Day, so we're requesting that, as well as the month of July, which traditionally we have the whole month off for summer vacation, summer recess. And then there was a request before that election day that we canceled that meeting as well. So if council is in agreement with the proposed schedule, council can vote and adopt that, and we're available for any other questions or requests regarding this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, and council, any comments? On this proposal, John?
My, I have no questions, but my comment is, I think that this is a good schedule, and I appreciate the canceling of the four meetings in two thousand and twenty-four, so I'll be supporting this.
The only question we had when we discussed the, the election day, which was, yeah. But I think most people But I think most people will want to probably be somewhere else, watch television, see what's going on. So that's why that one probably better.
I, I think that was a good choice.
It's gonna be a robust election, especially the communists.
Any further comment on this? Let's open it up for public comments. Anybody here in chambers who wants to comment on this schedule? Not so. Is anybody standing online who wants to comment on this?
No, but now we're listening.
Nobody? So let's bring it back to council. And is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed 2024 city council meeting schedule.
I'd like to just make one quick comment. And that is, it might be a public, a nice public service that if we were to put this calendar into a file that people can download and integrate it into their calendars very easily. I know that I've done that with a number of other organizations. And if you need some help doing that, I can, I can help you guys out with that.
Are we talking about this one?
Yeah. So there's a way that you can actually create a file and then people can subscribe to this calendar. And that way, it would always be on their calendar if they ever just wanted to see when the next public meeting was. Instead of having to go dig up this document somewhere, they would just be able to see it right on their Outlook or Google Calendar or whatever other calendar system that they use.
Would you be willing to work with our city clerk to?
Sure.
Help implement them?
Yeah.
Right. I think it's a good idea.
I actually have a calendar that tells me all of the movie releases. So I don't make the next Star Wars movie, so. Very useful.
Did you, I think, Mayor, if I may, one other thing we may be able to do is print like a poster-sized version of this and hang it on a wall up here somewhere. So we can know when those dates are.
I know somebody else who does that. Kind of little guys.
Cross-out the meetings that are gone.
We used to have a flipboard over here with the calendar.
Sorry.
Kind of in a way, I guess.
We have a motion to.
A motion we have.
I second that motion.
We'll call out more. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? No. Motion passed by the. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consider and approve city council committee slash commission assignments for calendar year 2024. Year two, we have a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. It is the time of the year after the new council is seated to go through and appoint the council for the board and commission assignments. And staff, thank you, city clerk, and Zalos Lakemrika for going through and cleaning up some of the items on this sheet. Because I think the ones highlighted in yellow are ones that we believe are not functioning anymore. So we decided to highlight those. And at this point in time, you see, we have who was on 2022 and who the alternate was and who to propose 2023, or excuse me, 2024. And the alternates are, according to what the mayor has requested. We are available for questions or comments.
And just, sorry, just for the record too, I reached out to joint venture Silicon Valley Network. And they mentioned, they work mainly with the city managers. And there, I believe that there's a fee to pay. So at this point, if you guys were to be interested, we would then have to register city manager. So this is not work. The lady that was there didn't inform me. But I just wanted to bring these back.
I have one comment. Actually, when I went through this thing for the third time, I caught something that was not correct. The 2023, the year that's now passed, Santa Clara Valley Water District, it says, uh, Marquette slash Turner. That's not correct. It was, well, timer, Marquette.
I think that was, that was me transferring. So I think that was my mistake when I was transferring.
Yeah, 2023 is the same as 2024. So it's not changing.
Okay.
Council members, any other comments?
Actually, you didn't try to, you're very, very good at that. That is your better answer.
Yeah. We'll talk about that at some other point. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Right, so a little break. We need to do a public comment on this also. Anybody here in chambers who wishes to comment on these assignments? Is there anybody online?
No hands or eyes.
No hands or eyes. In that case, we'll bring it back to the council. Any further comment?
Yeah, on the joint venture Silicon Valley, if we can find out what to do and what the cost is. I, I think we can leave the assignment as it is. But we'll come back to council. If it looks like it's a functioning thing, we'll participate. And please look like appropriate, justified, and also make that issue.
Okay. Council member back to you.
I would like to comment on that. I'm involved with West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority and also Santa Clara County Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission. And joint venture Silicon Valley, Silicon Valley Joint Venture, they participate heavily in the food recycling programs. And they are paid and they are engaged and paid by those agencies separately. So even though, even if we weren't part of, of that, we do indirectly, we're, we're, we're part of joint venture Silicon Valley. So it, I was wondering the, the same thing. But then I learned kind of how it works. And I think joint venture Silicon Valley does, does excellent work. And they're very focused on what they do now. Sorry.
Okay.
So we need to figure out how to participate in that. If it's appropriate. I don't know if you attended any meetings or not.
No, well, so we, the city of Monte Reno, I don't see a rule in participating. But we are involved with them through the Santa Clara County Waste, or Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission and through West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority.
Okay. So if in the future it becomes necessary to take another look at this, we will revisit it. But for now, this is fine.
We should delete the name from there then. I guess I'm wondering if, yeah.
So we did have a comment already, but there was nobody there. So we're bringing it back to council for further comment and or to folks on approval of his schedule. There are any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule as set forth tonight with the amendment striking Silicon Valley.
Yeah, just clarification. City manager mentioned that the yellows were not functioning. Are those functioning or not? I mean, it's.
So. Right, the other three.
The yellow is not functioning. I know that.
Correct.
County Express.
So I reached out actually to them and they have been inactive.
All two of them?
Yeah, the ground table has been.
The ground table, I know.
So the other two have been inactive. And I do recall, you know, some emails stating that they don't foresee anything in the very near future of them having meetings.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
So we should remove those then?
If you guys are okay with us moving on four of them at this point, correct? Could we have the joint venture Silicon Valley that we are technically not part of as of now? The Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority State Route 85. And we also talked about the round table not being inactive. And the last one is the express lines, setting policy.
Okay.
So my, my motion will be to accept and approve the commission assignments as put forth by staff with the deletion of those items in highlighted in yellow.
All right, so is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any against? Any opposed? No?
So five zero.
Passage five.
Were you gonna? Oh, I thought you looked like you wanted to raise your hand. So five zero zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, revisions to the city of Monte Reno council at all committees. Year two, is that a?
Thank you, Mayor. As with the committee commission reports, it's time of the year to take a review of the ad hoc committees that council had voted to put in place in the past. And staff has prepared a comprehensive report of our existing ad hoc committees and when they expire, the charter, and who currently serves on those committees. And you could see that several of them are coming out January 17th for expiration. One of them expired in October. We got February 21st, January 4th. So technically, all of them will be going away there for a tenure of one year.
Sorry, that's when they were established. So I think the one that you're talking about for October was the date of establishment.
Oh. I apologize. So the one established in October will be good until October of 2024. My apologies. But the others will be expiring. So council has to make a decision if they would like for these to be reappointed, reestablished entirely. They are not standing committees, which are committees that go on for an indefinite period of time. Staff has suggested some consolidation. Case in point, in the future, after the housing element, which was discussed earlier this evening, is finally adopted, staff is recommending that we look at forming a general plan update committee. And in the general plan update committee, they'll be looking at things like climate, language, mobility, potentially DEI, emergency preparedness. So we thought it might be wise to let those ad hoc committees go by the wayside and then reestablish the functions of those into a general plan ad hoc committee. The Veterans Memorial, we thought would be good to combine with the community center committee at this time, because that is part of that greater project. So a little bit of consolidation and simplification, the functionality of those three going into the, the other committee, the community center committee and the future general plan update committee. Regarding finance, this one needs to be re-upped. We're, we're almost done with that. If council desires to do that. And the information technology, we're looking for some direction on that as well. That concludes my comments. We're open for council deliberation. Oh, we included a copy of the strategic goals as well, which we'll be digging into in the next item, what has been completed. But you can see what council's direction was last May. If we go down to the environmental sustainability and the, you know, we have the pedestrian, bicycle and pedestrian master plan has been adopted. But in category two, maintaining community character, updating the general plan is a strategic goal of ours. But we're thinking that, that, as we said, the functionality of those two ad hoc committees can be rolled into that in the future.
Thank you. Council, any comments, question, sorry, any questions about this?
More comments, yes, I think, yeah. Yeah, the city manager is making some suggestions. I think it may be appropriate to, to veterans memorial committee within the community center committee. I suppose the community centers should also be very concerned. But I think that's not a bad suggestion. You wanted the climate action and DEI into a new committee called the plan committee, I guess. And that would be, and the community technology could go with that too, I suppose. So that would leave you with the emergency preparedness committee, pressure policy staff. Law enforcement committee, radio, law care, transparency. But it's been going on. And the finances, everything. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I, I think that that's the. Yeah, I believe it's fair to say that all of these committees are active and have some consolidation. That's what we make sense of. So I will definitely support that. The only question I have is about the climate action ad hoc committee. I'm not sure where that's going. Would you like to comment on that?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll make some comments. First of all, I believe that if we have a general plan ad hoc committee, I would support that. And I believe that our city manager said that you wanted to include the climate action ad hoc in that as well as the emergency response committee in that. And I believe, was there one more, Steve?
Yes, so when we update our general plan, we'd be looking at transportation and mobility.
Oh, there is a transportation and mobility commits, commission or committee ad hoc?
There is not one.
There is not.
That would be the language. But in addition to transportation, mobility, climate action language and emergency preparedness language and possibly DEI language, diversity, equity and inclusion language, those would be all new things that could be incorporated into our general plan, which I believe hasn't been updated since 2010 or 12. Something on that. It's been a little while. But again, we've been, you know, planning on taking on that task. And we're, we're opening it to the housing element first. That's a logical step. And I would recommend at that time, once housing element is certified sometime in 2024, that this can become a strategic goal and or an ad hoc committee, a general plan update ad hoc committee of the council. And then we can incorporate, you know, the functionality of these other committees.
So, Mr. Leonardo, are you suggesting that we strike the entire ad hoc committee for the climate action plan and the emergency preparedness until we create a new ad hoc for the general plan after our housing element is approved? Do I understand that correctly?
That is correct, as well as incorporating the functionality of the Veterans Memorial Ad hoc Committee into the Community Center Committee. So just cleaning it up.
Okay, I, I support that. I think that the IT committee has met once, I believe, that there's an, an issue that, there's at least several agenda items that they've got to meet on in January, February. And then also the finance committee that was active last year. And our financial statements for the year ended August, or sorry, June 30th, 2023 have not been completed yet. And I think that the finance committee needs to be in place because we dealt with the 2022 financials in 2023. And now we deal with the 2023 financials in 2024. So I think there's, there's a lot to work for those ad hocks.
That's an ongoing.
They are ongoing.
Almost a standing committee then.
Yeah. So, so these are ad hoc committees. That means they are temporary. They are not required to comply with the Brown Act. And to be temporary, there means a temporary duration and limited scope. So, and the limited duration is no more than a year, although there have been some court cases that say even a year is too long. But generally, it's one year. So we can't continue these as they are. We need to come up with the ones that you want to keep. They have to have a new charter and a new time period. So for the finance committee, right now, it's advising the. So for the Finance Committee, right now, um it's advising the oversight regarding the Community Center Project. Um and improvement of the city finances. So the community centerpiece um could come out, it sounds like. And um we we, I would recommend that you come up with specific. Areas for improvement and you would focus on those for the next year, so that we're changing. It can't, it can't be a broad category of topics that you want to talk about anything. It needs to be very limited. Um, and it has to be something that can be completed within the year. So for the Finance Committee, we need to work on that. Um, if we eliminate, if we roll in the emergency preparedness, the information, um sorry, the climate action. Into the general plan, I would recommend not not creating that general plan until we're ready to actually do the work. Because that'll then give us a year from that point, rather than including the year time where we're not doing anything. Um, the Veterans Memorial, we can add to the Community Center. We just need to bring back a resolution to to add that to its responsibilities. Um, and information technology, we would have to um. Right now, it's. Pretty broad. We would need to be be specific for um the other year, and perhaps. We want to come up with some different names, so that it's clear that these are new, truly new ad hoc committees.
Hector Ruich should go with you. I think.
Simon, something.
So, are we meeting before January the seventeenth, twenty twenty four?
We meet January sixteenth.
Sixteen. Okay, so what I would propose is that um. I will work with the ma- mayor Wolshimer on new. A new charter, if you will, description for the Finance Committee. And with Vice Mayor Craig on the I T Committee. And I can. Also roll the Veterans Memorial into the Community Center Committee.
I can add that, that's.
Okay, then you just do that.
Because, because that one is becoming a standing committee, so we don't have the same restrictions.
Oh, okay.
It's only if we want to have on, if we want to have ad hoc committees that those restrictions.
So those are the two ad hoc committees that all work with with the folks that are on those committees right now.
Okay.
So may I make a comment, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, I think it would be a mistake to eliminate Emergency Preparedness Committee. Perhaps we should reinstitute the committee with a new name and modified charter. But there's still a lot of important work to be done. The greatest responsibility of any governmental body. To ensure the safety of its residents. And that is if their homes are attacked. Probably the greatest risk that we face are earthquakes and fires. And every year, there are local emergencies from storm damage and flooding. So I want to point out that Monteserino today is behind the curve on emergency preparedness. Los Gadas is taking this very seriously. They have eighteen to twenty N I C Ps, and they're continuing, they are continuing to build them. Monteserino has one, and that one is very outdated. Okay, an N I C P is intended to support a small neighborhood. So the N I C P that we have only supports the Dave's Avenue area. It does not support um Kiro, it does not support uh across the street, right? And today, there are several areas of emergency preparedness that need immediate attention. As you all know, the previous council. Put together twelve thousand dollars for an N I C P at City Hall. The city manager and staff still need to implement that. Okay, we also need a recruitment program for certain volunteers for Monteserino. Today, we only have five. Okay, five volunteers from Monteserino.
Yeah, yeah.
And we were the newest one, right? So, an N I C P doesn't do as much good if we don't have people to support them. Right? And we need outreach to significantly increase the number of Monteserino residents. That are able to help out during emergency. In January, we had an emergency, we had to all go out and look for trees that had fallen. Monteserino only had two people walking the streets. The other two were at the Emergency Operations Center. And the rest were all in lockdown. So, um, and the third one that we need to do is. We have, our committee has helped several local groups to set up neighborhood watch programs. And we need to continue to do that. Okay, we need to set up clock cameras installed not only on uh public streets, but also private property. So we have not heard, I mean, we have not had an urgent earthquake in over thirty years, but we know that one is coming. Okay, and the first priority any government body should do is to provide the safety of its residents. We need to treat that responsibility seriously. This is not about having a place to charge cell phones or checking mail. This is about saving lives, lives, and I hope you agree. So I would suggest that we do not eliminate the Emergency Preparedness Committee. In fact, I think we need to strengthen it.
Okay, thank you for your comment. And I, I have to say, I agree. Um, the problem is the Emergency Preparation Preparedness Committee this year, even though. It's just on paper. Um, I'm on it and you're on it, but we've never met, we've never had a discussion, so. If we want to keep this one alive, we want to change that. We need it to be active and have goals and. But I'm, I'm volunteer to participate in that. Safety, security is definitely high on my list, so I I agree with you.
No, I I think it comes from the current, like, position. I was just wondering, we've had this thing, not just for one year. For the last five years, it's been a news to the committee. Isn't this some of the role that the city manager should be looking into and doing? Or do you have any thoughts on uh what we can do, give you, so if it's done? I mean, as council members, you know, we come to meetings, and that's why. Unless you're Mayor Vekic, more than that, but the rest of us mostly attend meetings. Is, so it's an end of being on the city manager to say, hey, guys, this is what I need, this is what I need to get done. And here are all the things that have to happen. Is there something that can be done? I mean, because obviously these are things that have to be executed rather than planned or thought of.
So the purpose of an ad hoc committee is to address a specific need, and when they're formed, the two council members who are on them. Um, have to provide the vision and actively uh tell or work with the staff in conjunction with the staff to. Bring forth recommendations to the council. They want to adopt. Resolutions or or implement any action coming out of the ad hoc committee, as was mentioned by uh the mayor. This um. The Emergency Preparedness Committee didn't even meet in all of twenty twenty three. So these are only good for a year. It essentially needs to be re-scoped or or re um. Name something else, and there has to be action taken. It has to be meetings between the ad hoc committee members. And there. We discussed this earlier today. It's important to have a staff liaison uh that relates to which particular department on these things. So um staff is more than willing to work with the council members who are on these ad hoc committees and set up meetings and. And provide staff input during those meetings, but um. I will say, uh another example, the Climate Action Ad hoc Committee sounds great, but. Uh I tried to put forth a climate action plan for the city. I. Put it all together and handed it to the ad hoc committee in crickets. They never even met, they never even adopted it. So uh that one's been hanging around for a long time, and that was before um council member Remeka check and. Uh Mayor Wolshimer have uh have been on the committee, but um. You know, these things are now looking like ongoing or standing committees. But nothing has uh, nothing has occurred. They produce no fruit. I know the city has been busy with a lot of other things. Yeah, they're looking to either get some more direction, more action out of these and or consolidate them. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so so what I was really trying to get to is, does the head of committee need to get in there and get into the gathering, say this is what needs to be done? Or is this something that come from, can come from staff and saying, you said you want the city safe? This is what it needs, needs to be done to, I mean, because it is there. And and then give the feedback to the council or the committee, whatever, and 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 start executing on it. Rather than wait for, you know, the guards from the city council to come back and say, here is what should be done, you know, this is what the worker decree. They should, should be coming up from, 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 from the staff side.
Well, my experience.
I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot. I just want to understand the roles that, you know, we're supposed to be playing.
I mean, my experience has been, it has been driven by the council. Council member feels there's a need. They're passionate about fulfilling a need. Staff doesn't necessarily have the capacity to, because we only have a certain amount of staff members, so the council takes the charge. And then they have the meeting with the other council member and they they go to the staff, at least that's the genesis of it. Then they go to the staff and they, it's, they need staff to do some. Research or some work. Staff coordinates meetings with them, but it has to be, I think, council-driven. If staff were to come up with. Ad hoc committee ideas, right, then we would be like the council. We would be providing the vision to you. I think the council is the one who, uh the body that needs to provide the vision and the purpose of these, of the the charters of all these things. Um, we can make some recommendations, we can, like we did this evening. But um the rules are, they're only good for one year unless they become a standing committee.
I, I got that, so. Thank you for clarifying it. I guess we later will discuss that on that. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, maybe I see something, please.
Sure.
Um, the N I C P that was approved by the previous council.
Yeah.
Since, and the responsibility of the city manager, right? I talked to um the cert people of Las Gadas, Jackie Rose. And she said, I can't do anything without your city manager moving. So that's what we need to do. And um we did meet last year. Last two weeks, we have two neighborhood watch groups in Monteserino. That I worked with in the past. We, I don't have to work with you all the time, but I think, you know, that nevertheless, we shouldn't have the committee in existence. We cannot remove the committee and say it's, it's done. If we have an earthquake tomorrow. And a residence, we have residents that die, they'll come back and say, well, what have you done? Right?
Why don't we do the following with, with this come, why don't we do the following with this committee? Why don't we? With for another year? And if during that year, the um general plan and all committee. Um, becomes active, then we may consider rolling it into that. But until that time, I agree, we should keep this one alive.
I think all of us have committed or have stated are committed to the importance of emergency preparedness in our city. And why don't we take a look at, instead of having an ad hoc committee, that we make a commitment at the council. To pick four meetings throughout the year and have an emergency preparedness agenda. We know that there are twenty some odd dates in twenty twenty four that all five of us are going to be in this room. And we could probably get a lot more done, instead of having an ad hoc committee who meets the scheduled time with the city manager. Who then needs to pray prayer report, then they need to bring into the council, then the council need to discuss it. So we can circumvent a lot of this red, hey, just get the work done right here. Our calendars are usually not that full, that we couldn't say, we're going to do one hour. For an agenda item every quarter and call it the emergency preparedness agenda item.
Which would be sort of an open discussion.
Open discussion, or if there's a particular topic, we would, you know, focus in on that and make sure that they can make a decision. Pass it down to staff and things could probably get done a lot faster.
Excellent idea, uh.
So I, I want to, I want to build on uh the Vice Mayor's idea. I think that's a great idea. Uh, I also hear Councilmember Turner saying we need to keep the ad hoc in place. So. How about we do this? The ad hoc stays in place and their charter changes to identifying. Uh, issues for a quarterly meeting of city council, so it's not. So the ad hoc says, these are what the four issues are going to be. Here's when they're going to come up to council. And then, then we bring it to council. I thi- I think that's, then, then, then we get the leadership from. Our two cert members that are on council. And we also have the participation of staff and council.
That could work.
I think that sounds good, and also if you change the name of the, change it to the same Monteserino Committee or something else like that. Safety Committee, the same, the same committee, but I think that might help you with the, not having the same committee going on. But I think it's a good idea. Hopefully, we can get direction from both sides, I mean.
And I think one of the things we need to is, is, you know, a, a, a responsible staff person. That can attend this, because I know that our city manager is very busy all the time. And it's not able to do this. So if we have somebody that is assigned. To work with the Las Gadas Police Department to install an N I C P. Or a neighborhood watch group like we had two weeks ago, right? Then that would, that would, that would be helpful. And, you know, I've, I've been on this committee by myself for so long. And you, you were able to get your uh certificate a couple of months ago. So I think this is a good opportunity for us to keep moving on.
That's true. Yeah, I, I think we can do both. Uh, but then, oh, uh, council member Remeka to promote, I think that might work. It's sort of a, then it's become sort of a standing committee that advises the council on topics that we discussed. In the quarterly, safety and emergency preparedness. It, it doesn't prevent individual council members from doing work like setting up. Um, neighborhood watches. Okay.
Like we're doing with the other two, we can um. Prepare language for the, the scope and send it to the two of you to look at.
Any further comments on this? I think we're still, we're going to council comment section here. Okay, then we will open this up for public comment. You know, like here, so anybody online who's interested to comment on this?
I'll go ahead, all right?
All right, here. Council and further question necessary. I think we've given staff and city attorney enough direction to move forward. Alright, so should this be an agenda item in almost sixteen, twelve, January? We'll make sure. Okay. Do we need to vote now? Or we will vote?
No, we have direction. We'll bring these back to you.
Right. Uh, the next one is, I certainly accept the city manager's quarterly report covering days, April first through September thirty, twenty twenty three. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is the review of two quarterly reports combined into one. We had so many busy agendas. This past year that I was unable to get these to you earlier, um but nevertheless, better late than never. Um, the first part of the report covers the building and planning highlights. You can see that the building permits that were issued were more. The construction evaluation was much greater and the amount of revenue was greater, although the inspections completed were less. But that means we had more bigger projects. It goes into the hundred sixty thousand dollar S B two grant that we received in the reimbursement. And then we are looking at uh our planning permit applications being moved online. Um, by the way, all of our billing permits and planning permits will be online as of January first, twenty twenty four. That's a new state law, so that's something going on behind the scenes. Um, we'll report on that next time. I put in the report also the fix it Monteserino data. This is what we formerly called C Click Fix. And when you look at the data in that report, um you can see how many inquiries we had on each subject. And when you look at the data in that report, um, you can see how many inquiries we had on each subject in the length of time to resolve those. We do prioritize these things that are uh, more urgent like uh, potholes uh, and, you know, street signs and down trees and stuff get fixed, generally speaking, uh, more than things like vegetation removal and illegal dumping, which are uh, less prioritized. Nevertheless, we get to all things very quickly. Um, you can see within a matter of days. Things like code enforcement matters take a little bit more time to resolve just because the nature of those, we have to do research. Those are more complex than, say, you know, filling a pothole or whatever. Um, the data speaks for itself. Uh, there's not too many inquiries total that you can look at the bar chart. And if you have any questions about that data, let me know. I included uh, also this time a copy of the strategic goals. And the purpose of this is to show you what we have accomplished from the strategic goal session last April first. Um, it and the amount of goals that have been completed to during that that same quarter. So let me scroll down into that strategic goals report here. You can see the strike throughs that are the items that have been completed fully. A lot of the other items are either in process and or are a little more complex.
Can you put that on the screen, please?
My apologies. I thought I assumed it was up behind me. I see it on my screen.
We'd say before.
Are we recording?
Yeah, I think that's where it's done from.
That's the first item we covered.
Yeah.
There's the C quick fix, fix it, Montesereno bar chart. If you have any questions on the data there.
How how many uh, calls in various?
Uh, I believe it was uh, just under twenty, within that time period. This is what we are speaking of now, the um. Get back in the screen there. The strategic goals and the items that we have.
You're done? You finished? Okay, so you're not over there. Page seventy five.
Seventy five and the whole.
Seventy four, seventy five.
Of the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, so you.
So what page are you referencing, Steve?
Next one. You probably have it in a different.
So what I had asked for is to show the goals and what's
Stripped out?
Stripped out. And in my my and my what I'm wondering, just so that you know is uh, were these done by September thirtieth or are we are are we in the fourth quarter, the fourth calendar quarter?
So essentially, these were items that were addressed. Uh, I'll give you an example. So the green stormwater infrastructure project, we have direction on where that's headed. That's going to be part of the community center um, redo. So that one is essentially not completed yet, but all the research and all the staff work up until the point of when the community center gets done has been uh, largely addressed.
Right, so if I read number five, it says, consider funding a twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three capital improvement budget that may include items A through E. So so those are included in the budget. And for example, the city, the new city vehicle is sitting outside.
Yes.
So that's budgeted money and spent.
Yes.
Okay, and then number and and six A, that was done before the end of June, I believe. And that's, and it was amended and it's actually implemented.
I believe that project was completed in October.
In October, okay. So we'll see that is that the project's actually completed.
The community center additional six hundred thousand funds, those have been kind of approved each year at the budget. Reapproved each year, we adopt the budget. Um, this is some of these items are low hanging fruit. The city storm drain catch basin cleaning, there's forty thousand dollars of that, that's a partial uh, has been spent towards that project. There's sixty thousand dollars that I think was allocated to a streets project. Um, so that one can technically be struck off of there as well. Um, you know, the six A, the review of the investment policy, we did that earlier in the year and we did the lathering, investing in the treasuries. Um, so that's kind of where I think we were headed with that strategic goal. We hired the city engineer, public works person. Run more efficient city council meetings. I think we've taken a number of steps to do that, uh, especially with the updating of the sixteen ninety one point seven code. Um, we hosted a city council study session with the external facilitator. The survey of residents in Montesereno, um, I believe we've done that not only once but twice regarding the community center. We haven't done a citywide survey uh, of any other kind um, outside of the community center. Um, if the council wanted to just survey our residents on how are we doing? Do you like us? What do you see? We, you know, what would you like to see in the city of Montesereno? We'd have to hire outside consultant on that. If that wanted to be brought back as another opportunity uh, for twenty four, twenty five goals. You know, that could be done. Things like the Veterans Memorial, looks like that will be rolled into the community center, building the community center. You know, we've been going through the process of that. Um, posted office hours for city manager, there's been been some discussion on that. Um, review and improve the city of Montesereno website with easier access to historical minutes and recordings. Many of these items that are not struck through, there already has been dialogue on and uh, work put forth towards it, but by no means has been accomplished yet. So, but most of these goals have been addressed, updating the general plan. That looks like it might have to go in twenty four, twenty five goals. Um, the bicycle pedestrian master plan has been adopted. So you can see the progress which has been made. Uh, there was talk of the additional NICP for Montesereno earlier. Um, that we were talking about is potentially making a function of the city hall master plan, the site here. And um, so that's part of the community center project, the parking lot project. If we were to put it out in the parking lot now, it would have to be removed once we redo the parking lot. So that one, it's still in the works. It's not being brushed under the rug, but it is out there as a continuing goal. Wireless ordinance requires a significant amount of work um by city attorney and city planner, but that one will be done. We put other things in front of it, such as the lead blower or ordinance, such as the housing elements. We try to prioritize those things. The tree ordinance looks like it's coming back in February. Um, when we move on to category five, enhancing environmental sustainability, low and fire, uh, low water and or low fire landscaping, water conservation, those kinds of things will be, I believe, written into general plan language. Um, review and assess alternatives to offering affordable housing in Montesereno. Very difficult, perhaps part of the HCD process. Um, we'll see how that comes back. Um, but we did provide the ADU plan to them as uh, affordable housing option, which is probably the only viable attainable affordable housing option that we have, other than unaffordable multi residential housing. Um. So some of these may not make it to the finish line or and or as we do with our annual strategic goals, we'll bring them back. Just consider um, you know, their ability to either be re-scooped or struck off during the next strategic goals process, which is coming in the spring and council's desire to potentially add more goals at that time. Um. I think if we skipped anything. You know, assessing the viability of neighborhood improvement projects to fund focused improvements with limited scope. Potential bonding in neighborhoods. People want us to, you know, save better streets says we want to do this over in the poppy of Bruce Avenue neighborhood uh, to provide more uh, safety for the pedestrians, the schools. Um, but they bring us something that costs five million dollars. How is that going to get paid for? That would require bonding. But um, we're looking to the better streets for um, you know, their input on those kinds of things coming up in in the new year. We did work on, you know, what's called the S curve on Days Avenue that fulfills that requirement. But that one goes deeper, requires more dialogue. Road impact fees are being, uh, we did, I believe, index those. Did we index those? No, we didn't index the roads impact fees, but those are based on a set uh, schedule for um, when we we take out a a construction project uh, and um, a building project, there's a set amount that gets assessed to the um, the resident or the builder for those those fees, but the uh, West Valley um collection and recycling is cons, you know, in the new, as part of the new contract is considering as part of the franchise fees we collect uh, and enhance cost for uh, road impact fee, I believe. So um, I'm available for any questions uh, on this list, but moving right along, we've got a good number of them crossed off and we're gonna have another good number of those in the works. And as I said, some of those may not get to the end. Some of them may be rolled into other things. That's why we do it every year.
Can you leave a comment? Yeah, so the ADU, I don't know if you know that there's a bill that is now setting um, in in the legislative body that will allow ADUs to be sold separately from your house. So I think that's one of the things we need to take into consideration as as we're doing our um, housing element.
That's scary.
That is scary. And 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 you're not selling the land, you're just selling the building. So it's a it's a condo.
Right. Um, so our city manager um, as we hear goes by, uh, more and more of these items will be crossed out. That's that's how that report works, right? So it is covered uh, April through September. When will you report on the December end of quarter?
That will be in our January meeting. I will get that one turned around sooner. Again, we had a lot of um, agenda items late in the year. And normally I would not want this report to be number one combined into two reports, but also not be um, how do I say this? This late in the game. We like to get it right when the quarter wraps up at the first meeting afterwards. Uh, in addition, again, this is my first pass at providing an update on the goals. So um, if council has any feedback to me on that, that would be great as well. I like what we did on this. And before we know it, we'll have, we'll be having our next strategic goals uh, meeting in the spring for our preparation of our annual, hopefully it'll be our twenty four through twenty six budget, a biannual budget.
That's uh, I may give a comment what might be helpful. Not much more work than striking it out, because if you had a convention date. If you strike out an item, if they just finish November twenty twenty three as well. Okay, you don't have to do it going back, but going forward if you finish mine, just add the date. That would be very helpful. Any more comment? Okay. But we do need to open public comments first. For any open public comment, you're over here still. So is there anybody online who wishes to comment?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, but we'll bring it back to council. And any further discussion? Is there a motive to consider exempt reporting the report?
Oh, second.
All in favor, stay aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, four, five, zero. All right, and the final item on the agenda is the committee commissions report. Um, council member Craig.
Nothing to report. Nothing to report.
Council member Eli.
Uh, let's see. I attended the city's association with a function of a committee meeting. There is a, an already event at the Adobe which is a heck of a place to try to find bar parking, but they awarded, made some awards, one Mr. Kirishpa Chindia. The head of the Silicon Valley in energy, he's retiring, so they honored him. I think you're near, 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 check, home in the next second there also. And uh, so it was it was interesting event and uh, all the lecturers from the fifty, sixteen, fifteen city association, the representatives who attend city association meetings, there are other council members who are also there. I would encourage the rest of us to show up at their meetings, or at least there are, there are there events and gatherings and stuff like that. Get to meet every lecturer that's running in every one. Uh, the other thing that I can add, and that also wasn't quite an association meeting, uh, meeting of lectures, that was never made a club meeting of lectures, and it was interesting to see only people are running for Congresswoman N R U seat. Uh, so you already know Joseph Indian is running and Yvonne Loy is running and uh, Ricardo, former Ricardo is running. And then that meeting, Julie Lind announced that she's also going to be running since there are no women running, so she wanted to make sure uh, woman kind were better represented. And she's a former, can be a formidable candidate. She's a former team of Stanford.
Rashid Omar.
Rashid Omar, we don't mention, we take him for granted, I guess. Yeah, he's he's running, but it's yeah, so twenty twenty four is really going to be a year of uh, these guys spending five, ten million dollars. I don't know if you can get any getting ran out of that, but that would be, so that's that's okay.
All right, thank you. Councilor Turner? Councilor Eli.
Um, yes, uh, BTA didn't meet, West Valley Clean Water did not meet, West Valley Solid Waste Management did not meet, Golden Valley Clean Energy. We had uh, a meeting last week uh, of the board and uh, before that of the executive committee, I'm vice chair of the executive committee. And I'll be applying to be vice chair of the uh, of the board. Um, I will, and also there was a dinner beforehand that was attended by almost two hundred people. And I know uh, council member Alahi was there. Uh, and it was similar but different to the dinner with the cities association. I will make two comments. Um, my my first comment is, um, when I was at the cities association dinner, if it would have been a year and a half before or two years before, I would not have known any of the people there. And now I know almost all of those people. It's very few that I don't know. Um, part of making sure that Montesereno is is being seen and heard. And council member Alahi, you you uh, indicated that very same thing, that we need to to get out there. Um, and so that's my first comment. My second comment is that at both dinners, neither Javon and I sat at the same table so that we could meet other people and and interact. And I think the networking is very important because we're not violating the Brown Act by doing that. And coming up with ideas and and talking to them is very good. So I would, I and there were some people that the ma- city manager was with the mayor or the council member, and they're all kind of sitting together. I'm like, okay, whatever. I think we do that really, we did that really well, Javon, so I just wanted to point that out. And then uh, in terms of under my name, uh, and this is for uh, our city clerk, if you could strike under my name, the Association for Bay Area Governments all the way down to mayors of Santa Clara County, because those uh, should go to uh, our mayor, Mayor uh, Will Shammer, please.
Well, we just did the assignment, so for the next council meeting, that will definitely change.
In that.
Um. Let's see. I attended uh, within mayor, the West Valley mayor managers meeting in November. And uh, there's really not much to report, other than the subject was crime. Um, the city manager Campbell commented that crime is way down according to the statistic. And I brought out that brought out that a lot of citizens and residents report that crime is way up and world is coming to an end. So there's a match. Um, I don't know why, but I think it would be great if we can somehow publish more data on crime. Because it's really, it's not as bad as people think it is, and there's a lot of good data available. And also I think there are news organizations that thrive on saying that crime is bad. They have their own motivation to do that, which I won't comment on. Um, other than that, I have no comment. Anyway, the next item on the agenda is council member comments. I set aside to about council and we're going to brief. Anyway, the next item on the agenda is council member comments. Find set sites about council and we're putting a brief announcement or report. Anybody? There's yet another city manager report on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate um, my staff and this council. We had a wonderful year. This is the sixty-sixth year of Montesereno's existence, going on sixty-seven years. We got a lot done this year. And I'm very proud of the work that we have all done as a group, as a team. And we look forward to many happy returns, but we're going into year sixty-seven, so we're looking forward to the new year. And I also want to plug the Youth Commission and their Coats and Cans Drive. Uh, if there's anybody listening out there this evening, please bring your food and your coats to us and we will take those on behalf of the Youth Commission to the West Valley Community Services Charities and other local charities for those in need. And have a wonderful holiday season for the rest of it.
Thank you.
If I could leave a comment also. I, I, I really appreciate your saying that uh, Steve, I think your staff and your staff, because you called me as late. City underwriting smoothly, not adding complaints. Louis Terry, we're going to fit down, but we're good. So, thank you, thank you all a lot with the yesterday.
And you got three letters of commendation from three very esteemed citizens.
Yeah.
Why did you pay for me?
For you?
All the, all the credit goes to the, the whole team. You know, it, it's been a very hard working year and, you know, I just want to emphasize sometimes government moves slower than private business, as we all know. But in the end, we work with the resources we have and we get things done. We figure it out. We figure it out by working as a team and working together. And um, we have a great team, so many happy returns.
Yeah. Oh, and, and just by the way, I just want to make sure that that was taken as a very positive statement that I made because in all of my time on council, I've never seen letters of support for the city manager come in at the rate that I have for our city manager. So it wasn't, I guess three might have sounded like a low number, but considering I've never seen one, I think that you, you've definitely done a great job in our city and you've really put a great staff together. And thank you very much for all the hard work that you and your team has done.
Thank you. Grateful for the support.
Great. So I too want to thank uh, staff, uh, including city manager and everybody involved for a great job. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you in twenty twenty-four. Um, future agenda items, just enter one with anything on the next agenda.
Yes, um, obviously the ad hoc committees are gonna be on the agenda.
Yes.
And as well, at our last meeting uh, on December fifth, uh, there was, I think we've now got vice mayor here, uh, not mayor pro tem. And I do believe that we need to uh, update that. And uh, I received from the city attorney a word version of the, that entire section. I went through it. And I've given her a red line of it. There's all kinds of inconsistencies in there. It looks like it was cobbled together over the past number of years. But I went through so that the terminology is all gonna be consistent. So there's a lot of sort of cleanup in there. And we're getting rid of the term mayor pro tem. Or it's proposed, it's proposed for a city council to consider at the next mi- meeting, and I ask that that be on the agenda.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Any other proposed agenda items? If not, then the meeting of the city council, Montesereno City Council, December nineteenth is hereby adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Happy New Year.